Let's call this meeting to order.
Okay.
This is our flag for our temporary digs here as we're under construction.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to their republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
I would ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence since we have lost our oldest citizen in town, Mildred Harrington.
Thank you.
She's a very fine woman who really epitomized New England values.
She was ninety-nine years old.
Just shy of her hundredth birthday. Thank you.
It is a passing.
Somebody said two more days, you've been a hundred?
Well, that's what I heard soon, but I've been since corrected to say it was about a month from now.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, a month, two days, it's still, yeah.
After a century, it's close enough.
Close enough.
It is a passing.
Yes, really bad, but hey, that's life. Not much to do about that.
So reviewing and amending our agenda as necessary. I heard Paul, you had a suggestion for amending our agenda.
That was, um, where are we here?
Item six.
Item six, review.
This one.
Yep.
There's no number, so I don't know what it is.
Yes. So you're suggesting that we table reviewing the discharge of that and do that on our next meeting in light of the death that we just acknowledged?
Okay.
So we will, any other suggestions for amending our agenda? Any other additions, subtractions? If not, I'd hear a motion to amend as suggested.
So moved.
Item second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next item is reviewing and approving our previous meeting minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. One is for our regular meeting on July twenty-second, and the other is for our special select boards meeting on July eleventh. Would you like to make a motion to approve both? Has everybody had a chance to read these?
I have.
And I sent them around. They're the same as in the draft version that was sent around and then with the edits that were...
Right, we fixed the titles and all that.
We fixed the word "mad domain." Did you catch that?
Spelled Nymrick correctly.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd hear a motion to accept the minutes of July eleventh and July twenty-second?
So moved.
Move second? Who moved who second?
I think they're both tied.
Can you get that, Chris? It's a tie. We'll give Paul the motion and we'll give...
We'll flip a coin, who gets it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining from the special one because I wasn't there.
Okay, perfect. One abstained from, yep. Since today's date is the, gosh, eighth, yes.
Yep, already.
All right. Next up is a report from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Nobody's here.
I don't see anybody here.
So we go the next one?
We will. If they come later, we will.
Just say you're too late.
So we have on the agenda to discuss speeding problems on town roads. And Brad, I think that was a particular one for you?
Oh, I got something to say about that.
Oh, you got one?
I don't think they're high enough.
I agree. I can speed from the Four Corners to the town office in my payloader.
Yeah. You can do the speed limit, what they've got it set for. I mean, that's farm tractor friggin' speed.
David's farm tractor will run thirty-six miles an hour from the Four Corners all the way to here.
Yep.
Never miss a beat. My payloader will do that, too.
Yep. I think it's too damn low.
The town's grader will do that coming down here.
Are you saying that all you have to do is put it in neutral and it'll roll that fast?
No. Never take it out of gear.
Oh.
That International tractor will do thirty-six miles an hour.
Yep.
That grader, I think, is thirty-eight miles an hour is what it tops out at.
Yep. And we got our damn speed limits up there, what, twenty-five and Four Corners down through?
Oh, I thought we fixed that.
That was...
No, I thought that was just for the bridge.
Yeah, that was for the bridge. It's supposed to be back to thirty, I believe. I believe they changed it at Four Corners start.
They're gonna pick us up under farm tractors and give us a ticket. If we do more than thirty, we'll do one of them.
I'm not gonna be the one to say raise it because everybody's screaming that everybody goes too fast.
Well, what I wanted to bring up was that there were two postings on Front Porch Forum about speeding.
On Mount Tabor?
One was on Mount Tabor Avenue, one was on North Main Street. So when Justin was in here the other day, I brought that to his attention, and he said he would monitor that. I'm wondering how we, do we have the results and can we act on...
Dave still hasn't sent me his, the final from, he wanted to wait till Calvin Hill was done, and that would have been the three, and then he was gonna send the thing with all the ones we got so we can put it all into...
One ordinance?
Right.
Would you, would you put an assignment to give him a little nudge so we can get that?
Yep, I'll give him a nudge and, yep.
And I still feel very strongly that, as we've discussed in the past, the area from Main Street to the bridge in Fishville should be twenty-five miles an hour like it always was when it was School Street.
So you all who are saying that it's too slow above, are you comfortable with twenty-five down here, but you, is it from the Four Corners where...
Oh, I think twenty-five down here, there ain't no school here no more.
Well, you have a very...
It's pretty bad for anybody to do twenty-five.
You have a very twisty, narrow road. You have twenty-five on Main Street, we have a straight stretch of road.
That one's too low.
You've got, you've got little kids that are riding bikes and walking up and down the hill here.
Yep.
And there are people that are doing over fifty miles an hour.
So...
I have no problem with the sheriff sitting out here and picking up anybody that's going fifty miles an hour.
Yeah.
Because there's no need to go that fast in the village, but I'm not, I don't know as I want to go any lower than thirty miles an hour.
No, neither.
For the Brook Road.
I think...
I'm not saying the whole Brook Road. I'm saying this part from the Fishville Bridge to...
Yeah, let's consider them in two different chunks.
Right.
Because they're very different.
Because that's how it always was.
Well, and, and, yes, I think the...
And then we switched when we got into nine-one-one numbering, and it all had to be the Brook Road, it couldn't be School Street.
And I think in one, we're talking about a residential area, and the other coming down the Brook Road really isn't a residential area.
Right.
So it seems reasonable to look at those differently. That doesn't mean we'll decide different applications, but let's consider them one at a time.
And there's other roads in town where I completely agree that it's, that thirty miles an hour is too slow.
Way too slow.
I can't very well weigh in on this because I have a little problem with going slow. But, but, so, let me ask you this. I know that we're doing the studies so that we are able to have the latitude to set the speed limit at what we would want to set at, and set an ordinance. If we were to increase the speed limit, do we need a study to increase the speed limit? I've only ever read that we need one to decrease.
Shouldn't have to have one to increase.
But we might have to have one to increase, so...
We're trying to go the other direction, and now we're changing in the middle of its dream.
Yeah, well...
I agree on, if the Brook Road isn't marked thirty from Four Corners down, down until you hit Fishville, and that's above the bridge.
Right.
Where the first actual house is, because there's a lot of kids on, and even on North and South Main Street now, the last few years, there wasn't hardly anybody on bicycles, but the other day, there was two going right up the road on North Main Street, and they were zigzagging, and, you know, and there's, there's more and more kids.
So...
That's forty up there.
Yeah, so what is it coming, did it used to be forty coming from the Four Corners down to Fishville?
Yeah, it used to be.
I don't know when and how it got changed.
Yeah, how did we get, how did we get to thirty-five?
I don't know.
It was about ten years ago.
Yeah, that was before all of this.
And it may have been that what people are thinking is you posted thirty-five and you don't stop people five miles above.
I'm wondering if they, when they changed all the signs, the state did all that, the Brook Road here, what, four or five years ago?
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if them signs were all changed at that point.
Well, if they were and they don't agree with the ordinance, then they're not enforceable anyway, and that's just a waste of everybody's time.
So I didn't, I didn't bring my big notebook with me because, because I came from another meeting today, so I don't have a copy of that ordinance. Do you remember? All right, so let's, let's do this. Let's, let's, Brad, could I ask you to take a look at that ordinance again and see what we've got in, according to the ordinance, what that should be posted at? And then we'll start with that and revisit it next meeting, and then we'll also find out whether we need to have a traffic study if we were to change it at all, going up or down. I thought the traffic study was primarily if we wanted to go below a certain amount, but I could be mistaken.
Down to twenty-five, that's as far as you can go.
Yeah, and I thought that some things needed, but I'm not sure. So, so we'll, we'll check that, and you'll check the, what it currently is.
That sounds good, and I also think we have some superfluous stop signs.
Oh, okay. Where do you think there are superfluous signs?
I don't think we need three at the bottom of the hill here.
I don't think so either. I think that should be one, and there's no more store down there.
And I think the same thing, and I think the same thing at Four Corners.
Me, too. Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent.
So you wouldn't, um, plain and simple. So at the Four Corners, everybody comes to a stop. Who would you have go straight?
You'd stop, you'd put a stop sign right in Margaret's front lawn.
That's right, so when you're coming from Pollet, you stop.
Right.
Oh, look at what Timoth did. One forty, they put the stop sign here, and you go through Caribou's, you go straight. Yep, you have no stop signs there. It used to be stop, stop.
So, so because for a time, you all might remember, there was a time when I spent more time at the Four Corners. I do remember, as a matter of fact, I had a dog killed there by a driver that went seventy through there.
Well, there again, that's ridiculous.
But we have a preschool on that corner, had people dropping off kids and things like that. And so the only thing I would say, I agree that it seems a little overkill, but when I think about the preschool there, and I remember what the bus drivers said to us when they came in, and they were saying that cars are repeatedly going past the bus even when they have their sign out and there's a stop sign, it does seem to me that that, in the interest of kid's safety, that it might be, that we can maybe all suffer through stopping there. Where did, that's a thought on that one. Where was the other superfluous one?
The only stop sign that used to be there at Four Corners was coming on the Timoth Road.
Right.
Right.
And the ones turning from Brook Road to Dandy Pollet.
Yeah, there's just not the volume of traffic to warrant these signs.
I don't think we should have the stop sign coming from Pollet because if we, this is my own personal, if you leave that open coming from Timoth Road onto that straightaway...
They're just gonna go straight through, that's what I'm saying. That's what I've lived, I've seen it, yeah.
And they do it now with a stop sign there.
I know.
So if we go back to one which I, I agree with, because I, I pushed and had these taken down when they put them up before I was on the board. And then they got put back up again because Nickel Store was there and the other offices, and they thought it was dangerous.
We also had a petition that was presented that had something like a hundred and thirty signatures on it, and there was no action taken on it.
Was that to put the stop signs in or to take the stop signs out?
Take them out.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is I just think there needs to be something to, you know, ask drivers to slow down more and stop at the Four Corners.
Even if they were yields.
Yeah, yield signs, you know, that's...
That's fine.
Well, I kind of like the idea, the old sign that was at Timoth, because then when you're coming the other way, you're turning, you're not doing that at a hundred miles an hour.
Right, right.
You're, you're coming to a turn now, that doesn't mean that the cars might not end up on David's front lawn, or he might have something to say about it, but...
No, they, everybody knows that. You see that road, pretty plain.
It's pretty plain that there's a house in front of you at that point, yeah. So maybe, so I guess if, if there's only gonna be one sign, I would prefer it to be on the Timoth Road, because I think that still slows people down. I also think it might be a good idea to engage Loretta, somebody who drives bus regularly there, just to get their...
Feedback.
Feedback, yeah, I do, because I think that that's our safety issues. And while we're on that topic, I put in a call again this week to Woodwise to try to see if we can clear that area there. I have not heard back. I think, I wanted to ask, does anybody know, is Ed Lewis still renting the camp at Woodwise? Do you know who has that lease at the, on the Oxville?
No idea.
Don't have no idea.
Because I was thinking they would know the local...
Dougy Tiff.
Is it Dougy Tiff? So if I call Dougy, I'd be able to get...
I want to say they've lost it, but I'm...
Oh, they did?
I'm not sure. I just saw him the other day, I should have asked him, but...
Well, you know, so what I need is the local forester for Woodwise, because I think that I'm just calling, I'm calling an eight-hundred number and I'm not getting through.
Tony Lamberton?
I don't know, does he do, but, well, but I don't know that he does Woodwise's. But he's, is he our county forester? Well, then he would know who Woodwise's is. I'll call Tony.
I can, I can get him to call, I know, I do work for him, so...
Yeah, so call Tony and ask him...
I know he does housers.
Who Woodwise's forester is, and then we can call and get a number. Yeah, great.
I know, I tried that, like Loretta said, she goes up with that pull-up and then gets in the road. I tried that, with my truck and trailer, and I pretty much got nailed.
Oh, interesting.
It was coming down around that corner, and come, I mean, that's, it's quick right there.
It's quick.
Better off at the bottom.
By the way, that little dip that's right there where you would be pulling off for that, that's getting worse, if you noticed that. I came down with my horse trailer the other day, and I was like, woo, horses just move for a ride.
Once we do that, I think at the top of that hill, even if, well, we should hopefully get it cleared, but I would suggest putting a dangerous intersection ahead.
Yeah.
Just, you know, people don't read signs now anyways, but at least it's there.
It's here.
Yeah.
It's here.
Yeah, and it could be the driver who just needs a reminder or whatever. I just, I think, yeah, I think that's...
From the top of that hill down to the bottom where you pull in there, it's quite a little ways. I mean, everybody knows they gotta start slowing down because that's, and I can get out of there in my truck and trailer, I don't know how many times, pretty easy.
Well, we know it, but I'm noticing an increased number of New York State plates going up and down the road here, and I suspect that if they're going up and down the road here, they're heading over to New York and they're probably in that area, too.
I would think. Okay, so let's see, let's summarize our, so for our...
I'll do Dave Fox and Tony Lamberton.
You'll do Dave Fox, all right, so let me just make some notes of this so that we know. Paul's gonna do Dave Fox and Tony.
Oh, keep reaching for my glasses.
And Brad is going to check on what our ordinance is, and we're gonna check to see, I can check with the regs to see whether, or actually, you know, it's really, that's a Dave Fox question as to whether we need to...
Increase?
Yeah, whether we need a survey, so he can ask that, and that'll save us some time. Would you ask him that as well? Okay, and then, and then that brings us, I think, still to the one discussion about the speed limit here, assuming that we get the...
Yep.
Because we've had the study done, the study's gonna tell us that probably that we can go anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five here, I don't know. And so then I guess it comes down to you all debating what it should be in the village, and I say you all, only because I, I don't feel like I have, I don't feel like I have much, I don't live in the village, I don't know what the traffic issues are.
But we can have this discussion in September.
Do you want to do it in September, and then we can warn it and other people can come? Okay.
If you don't...
Let's do that.
That Brook Road...
Because we have some heavy items coming up here that take some time.
All right. So then moving on, um...
Parker Bridge contract.
Yes, the sign, the Parker Road Bridge contract, which I have in here. One observation that has been made is that this...
Did you skip access permit?
Did I?
No, that's next.
Next. Come on, Brad, get over the show.
That's after...
But you're talk...
That's after...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, come on.
I'm just teasing you. So Parker Road, this does say Parker Hill Road, so if we're going to sign it, I do suggest that we cross off Hill and we can initial that, since it is Parker Road. I've had a chance to read this through. I was reassured because it does reference, it says, "In accordance with all the specifications which are attached here, too, as Exhibit A," which is the proposal that we, well, it's the proposal that they sent back into us, so it's what we read last, last meeting and approved, and so this would be the contract. Oh, just to maybe update people, we had the discussion at our special meeting about the fact that, that maybe there had been some misunderstanding on the part of one of the contractors who hadn't put in a bid. And so I did talk as I was going to, I talked with the folks at V-Trans and also with our attorney. Our attorney did say that if there was clearly an issue with miscommunication about it, that we could have said that we're going to open the bids again, but he suggested that, you know, that we really needed to go back to the request for bids and read what was there, and actually, that's what V-Trans said, too, is let's read what's in the bids. So we went back and read, and, and it did state pretty clearly, you know, about the, the engineer and at what point the engineer would come in, and it also did give an opportunity and date and when people could call and ask questions to clarify. So V-Trans basically said to us that we, they really didn't think that we had grounds to open it up, you know, again, and suggested that we communicate to our contractors, you know, in the future, that, you know, that, you know, not to be shy about asking questions and things like that. So I think it's unfortunate because this may be a higher bid than what we would have had, but the other thing is that V-Trans also said that one of the things that happens with these federal contracts is that there's a lot of things about the pricing that's very different, unless people have done a lot of federal contracts, they may not, that's, that could explain price differentials being widely off, because, for instance, if this is a federal contract, you have to pay federal wages, you can't pay your local wages. So I know, I talked to some folks who used to work for the road crew in other towns, and they said, yeah, we know, they were doing work in Kelly Stand Road one time, and they said, yeah, that was great, you know, because we were being, you know, suddenly our paycheck went up to, you know, twenty-five dollars an hour or something back in the day when they were only making sixteen or something with the town. That's, so, so payments would have been different, and then there's also just a bunch of regulations and specs and things that, you know, so V-Trans thinks this is a reasonable amount, and it's the amount we had approved at, you know, we did, we did, we'd already voted on this and we already accepted this bid, it's just that afterwards, we thought that if there'd been any confusion and we could open it up, we thought we would check on that, but that was a dead end, is what I'm saying, so...
Well, one thing that we could do in the future is have it engineered and then put it out to bid with our plans.
Well, that's...
Then everybody's bidding the same project, not trying to figure out they're cheaper because they did a different method.
So I think the challenge with this one was who would, who would be doing that engineering? V-Trans refused to do that in this case, they didn't have the resources to do that, they didn't, they didn't want to go by that process, and for us to pay for the engineering would be, I don't know if we get...
We're paying for it one way or the other.
Well, but I...
It's coming out of our pocket.
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe we can build that into the contract, the RFP, next time. It's a good idea, we can look into it. All right, so, so we've already actually voted to accept this bid, so we're really just signing the contract, but it might be good to have a motion to sign the contract. Would anybody like to?
I'll make the motion that we sign the contract.
I second it.
Second, great. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. It looks like there's only one spot to sign. Well, I'll tell you what, this is the largest thing we've ever done, I would feel really good if my fellow select board members would sign on the dotted line, why don't everybody sign right below? Only me to hang out and drive.
Yeah.
Throw me under the bus. Great. Next up is to discuss a new access permit form to approve, and this sounded like a big deal until I reviewed what it is. This is what you and I talked about probably three months ago, actually, longer than that. It came up when, when there was the driveway permit being done on Calvin Hill. And we noticed that our applicant, you know, that they're supposed to fill this information in, but the, there was never a place for the applicant to actually sign. So that's the amendment, is that we have added an applicant signature line to the form, so it's...
And also, when I read it, it does specify the size of the culvert and the depth. That's where we ran into problems the last couple of times.
Right.
Because one of them has to be redone again because they didn't go the proper depth, so...
Could I just take a quick peek at that?
Yes.
Yes, here.
Yeah.
Yes, so we now have restrictions and conditions, and, and this is something we would be filling out, so if there was something specific to that property, you would just write in what it is and then sign it.
Did it go in there?
It doesn't, it doesn't mean... So this is sort of the template for what's usual, but if there was a situation that was different, you could do that, yeah.
Because the one property, they, they didn't pitch the driveway to run away from the road like they were supposed to. That was all, basically, we talked to the guy, the guy said, oh, yeah, I'll take care of it. Well, it didn't get taken care of, and then they didn't put it in the proper depth, so pretty much says if you got a eighteen-inch culvert, it has to be at least eighteen inches to two feet below the surface.
Well, eighteen, well, this is eighteen-inch minimum coverage of twelve-inch.
Twelve, yeah, or whatever it is.
An eighteen-inch culvert shouldn't have eighteen inches of dirt over top of it.
Well, this is twelve inches, doesn't it?
If it's twelve inches, it should have twelve inches dirt over top of it.
Well, so this is eighteen minimum coverage, twelve, should we...
Minimum coverage, minimum coverage, twelve.
I'm hearing two different things.
And it could be two foot, it depends on the ditch on both sides, so, you know. But anyways, it explains a lot better than what we, we had it. The permit before was just a general, yes, and look at it and approve it, and that was it, but this kind of gives a little, I mean, we can tweak it if we have to, but...
Restrictions and conditions of the driveway is higher than the town road, a setback must be dug at a minimum of twenty-five feet. This will allow for off-road parking during snow events and prevent water running from down into the hot town highway. If a driveway culvert is required, it must be a minimum diameter of eighteen inches and a length between thirty and forty feet unless otherwise noted by the road foreman. The amount of soil coverage shall be determined by the diameter of the culvert as follows. Eighteen inch has a minimum of twelve, twenty-four a minimum of eighteen, and thirty a minimum of twenty-four. Are we comfortable with that?
So it's, it's gotta be at least twelve and deeper, basically, with the minimum.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, it's gotta be at least a foot, and if it's not proper, the minimum, I think, covers it, because it's gotta be at least twelve inches, at least. That's probably more than what a lot of them are around town right now.[1621.06]
Yeah, I have to defer to you all just because I, it's not something I have experience with.
I mean, some of them, they're, they're right on top of the culvert.
Well, they'll climb out of the ground, won't they?
They'll, they'll change with the frost and stuff.
Yeah, well-
I assume that's the state standards anyhow.
Yeah, that, I think that's where they came from.
Yeah.
So.
So you want to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion that we'll accept them.
Okay.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. So we have accepted them. We don't need to sign those. Those are just for us to see. I lost my agenda. What did I do with that? Nope, here's the guy. I knew the one I've been writing on her. I'll be in trouble. Believe me.
Yeah, we're in reg now.
Ayes, uh, so we just did the access permit. Um, so we're discussing next the hazard mitigation assistance application. So, let me hand these around for people to, uh, no, it's, it's not. I thought it was multiple copies or something. So twenty-five percent match certification, Danby, Vermont Hazard Mitigation. So this would be, um, so this is a grant application that we approved previously that we would apply for. Um, uh, so, um, and it looks like they've changed the form a little bit, but it basically acknowledges that the town of Danby will be considered for a state matching grant to cover the twenty-five percent local match share in connection with a proposed project for a FEMA hazard mitigation grant. In the event the twenty-five local match share is not provided by the state, the town of Danby hereby certifies that we have the capability to meet the financial obligations of the twenty-five percent share. Um, project name or proposed mitigated address. Um, so this would be for a specific project. Let's see, would you think we would do this? Yes, this is email. I recall seeing last week, Danby's local hazard mitigation plan was approved by FEMA on seven twelve, two thousand and sixteen. It's a five-year plan, so we still have a few years in it. It will expire on, in Sep-, uh, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. If you're interested in grant funding to update your plan, I would reach out to Stephanie Smith and let her know. That way, when a grant application period opens up later this year or early next, she will know how to reach you. So I'm reading this to be that, um, I guess the only thing I'm stumbling on is it seems to say that it's a project name or proposed mitigated address. And this just doesn't seem, I'm not sure we have a specific address. Doesn't seem to be, let me just see. It seemed to be general opportunities for grants. To find your status, flood ready, would I scroll down to expanded community report? And blah, 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 funding is available through FEMA mitigation grants for your municipality to develop its first LHMP or update an existing LHMP. Please note, it can take six months or more for grants to be awarded and additional six to twelve months to develop a plan if your plan is set to expire within the next two years. If you have questions about local hazard mitigation plans or your current plan status, you can call this number. Um, and we're being, it says, discuss the hazard mitigation application.
Now, looking at that form the other day, I took it to mean that they were, that that money was to buy a property like the one in the dip that had been washed out and was basically useless at this point in time and we wanted to get people out of there.
I think it could be that, but it also could be, um, so hazard mitigation, I think, I think it can also be if we're anticipating maybe that there's going to be, um, some problem caused by a future weather event, something that's sort of an accident waiting to happen. Would that count too?
Well, that's basically what he's saying.
Right, but I think we, I think the example he was using was afterwards, the buying of property.
Right. Well, I thought that's what that form in your hand was for, was to purchase a specific property.
It would appear to me that it seems to be, it should be somehow property specific because it says project name or proposed address, so I'm agreeing with you.
So if we had a similar property that didn't have a building on it right now, we could say, let's purchase it because it's not a good place to have a building.
If it was in the, if it was in the flood zone and FEMA was willing to pay for it and we would have to, we would be saying that if the state wouldn't pay the additional twenty-five percent, then we would cover the twenty-five percent. So I, it says that we're to discuss the assistance application. It doesn't say we're supposed to sign it. I'm not sure that we can, I'm not sure that I'm signing without an address. I'm just, you know, so.
Check into it later.
I think we have to, um, thank you for your call. I'm glad to hear Danby is interested. Attached is a twenty-five percent match certification form that I will need filled out and signed. Okay, wait a second. Here, I'll keep you posted on the next round of funding availability. So it, it appears that, that they want us to fill it out so that they, we're saying that we would do it and then that way we can be put in the round of possible funding. So I guess we fill it out without a specific address and that address would get filled in later would be my guess.
Right, so we have nothing to lose.
But we have that, this is signed from Stephanie Smith as the Hazard Mitigation Planner, so I'm going to take her word for it that it is the way that we have to go for this. Um, and it looks like there are two copies of it here. Um, so I would love, um, entertain a motion to accept, um, to sign the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Applicant Fund so that we can be in the pool for grants. Now, one thing, well, let's hear a motion then we can discuss it.
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
All right, some further discussion. One thing I don't know is whether if we sign this, we would be absolutely obligated. But I think though, that since there's no specific project, I think we would still be able to determine on a project by project basis, yeah.
Whoa.
Shall we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay.
And that's to sign the-
Hazard mitigation assistance application.
Certification?
Application.
It's, I can hand it to you. It's the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Applicant Funding Certification. And it does say there's, there's this section and then it does say for property acquisitions, the homeowner would also have to sign. Um, oh, I did it backwards. Oh. Sign it twice. We'll figure that out afterwards. Would you like to see a copy, Chris, for your? Hand this, hand this with it so that we don't get things in them. Um, Danby Mountain Road Culvert, next step. So, um, Danby Mountain Road Culvert. We had determined that the bid that came in, we had one bid. And it was, um, for about eleven thousand dollars more than, um, what we had, with what was what our match would do and where we would be and what we had, um, anticipated because, um, because the person who bid had also given a rough estimate and their estimate had been significantly lower. Um, so Charlie, um, picked up the phone at our request and asked them if, considering that they had come in, they did bid higher than what they sort of led us to believe when we were doing the RFP, if they would consider splitting the difference with us. Um, we thought it was fair to ask to split the difference because the price of steel and all kinds of things had changed with tariffs and everything else since the time they did that. Um, they agreed to do that, so it is now, um, we still have one bid. It is for five thousand dollars more than we anticipated, that it would be actually about fifty-five hundred. Um, but, um, it's a reputable company. It's a, which one, is this Saul's, is this Daniels?
Daniel.
Yeah.
Did anybody notify Ashley on that one?
Yeah, he had a bid, he, that went to, he had-
He had a bid on that one?
Yeah, well, he did, but he was, he was notified about it. I was, his name was on the list of things that were mailed out. Um, yeah, his name was on the list of things that mailed out. Nobody else bid on that one. We only had the one bid. Um, and here, let's just see. Um, make sure. I think it's empty. No. So that was the proposal. We, we had, um, a grant for a hundred and seventy-six, if I'm remembering, thousand. And the bid came in at two hundred and sixteen. We had figured that what our, um, match percent would be, but we were still, um, so we had to do a certain amount of match above that hundred and seventy-six anyway. But that's still left us short about eleven thousand, but they've agreed to split the difference. And so, um, so we're actually right about where we, you know, we're not far from where we thought we would be. And I think that they first started pricing this over a year ago, right? Well over a year ago. Um, so, um, I'm trying to remember what we did at our last meeting. I can look at the minutes. Did we, actually, I think we may have, uh, let's look, that was July twenty-second, right?
That was a special one. I think we discussed it on that one.
I think that we, um, sign grant, sign grant, so, um, oh, here, consider off, no, wrong thing. Uh, uh, review bids. Thank you, Chris, for having such good minutes that I can find things in bold right away. Um, review bids for the Danby Mountain Road Culvert. One bid received. Special meeting to be scheduled for Monday, the fifteenth, at eight-thirty after costs reviewed and grant amount determined. Um, must be completed. So at the time, we tabled it till that Monday because we wanted to find out how much the, um, how much we'd received in the grant. We couldn't, we didn't have that information that night. So that Monday, we had the information and that's when we determined that we'd see if they would split the difference with us. And now, um, they did. And so I think we would be in a position-
That's been sent to them already. Uh, I think they, they're waiting for written confirmation that they got the bid.
Okay, right. So that's what we should do is maybe make a motion to give written confirmation that they got the bid.
I think it has been sent, but I'll, I'll find out from Charlie.
And will you make sure that the amount that's reflected in our letter to them is the?
Yep.
Um, five hundred dollars less, all right. So, um, going to make a motion to, um, probably Paul shouldn't make the motion if he's doing this commissioning.
Oh, I can't.
Well, you can, but, but it doesn't matter. So your motion to accept, to formally accept the, the bid from Daniels for the Danby Mountain Road.
I'll make the motion.
You're a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
One thing I will say about any of these projects, if we can bid them out November, December, we get better pricing.
Ah.
Because this time of year, you bid it out, everybody's booked for the year. They're going to give you high prices because they don't need the work.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, right.
Bid it in December, everybody's hungry and their pencils are sharper.
Good idea.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Will you pass that along to Charlie since, since, yeah? Um, um, let me just see what's, or I-
Well, when I think of it, did you ever pay, we ever pay Thor for the sand on the pre-buy? Because he was going to knock that-
On what?
On pre-buy on sand, he was supposed to pay Thor the first of July. Did we ever do that?
And I almost think he agreed as long as he got commitment that, I think it was a kind of a handshake that as long as he got the agreement on, you know, commitment from us that he would-
But I thought he said he wanted to have the money in July.
Yeah, that's the way it was written up, but I believe that he said as long as, you know, we were committed to him.
But I mean, we can't, if we wait winter time, then we ain't really doing, we agreed to go. We agreed by pre-buy, we not got ten grand.
Yeah.
That's quite a bit of money. I think we ought to check and make sure with him.
I can check with him, find out.
Just in case he wants it and others, you know.
We, have we written a check to him? Yeah.
No.
No, no.
I'll get, I'll get in touch with him and see.
Okay.
I know they're right out straight right now, so I'll get a hold of him.
Yeah, he probably don't need the money right now.
So next up is to, um, discuss the town hall auction information. And did you all get copies of that? It looks like I've got copies here.
Okay, we'll put that up for bid. I think we ought to put a reserve bid on it.
That is a reserve bid of ten thousand.
Jesus, that's not very high, ten grand.
No, it's not high, but that's what they recommended to start with. They, their feeling was that when you say, starting at ten, you'll attract a larger audience.
They also say that, um, um, we would hope to have final sales prices in the twenty range. But they mentioned that there's some difficulties with selling this property. And so a minimum of ten. I, I would toss out this. I, again, feel that, that the town of Danby did vote to sell that building, but I feel strongly that they didn't vote to give it away.
That's right.
If we were to try to build a building like that, like look at what Timothy put into their community center that gives a room where people can meet, where there can be weddings and funerals and-
Right.
It would cost us well over three hundred thousand dollars. And I don't think for twenty thousand dollars, um, that we should let it go. Because I think that there are at least four properties within the vicinity of that because it could solve our parking problem. And I don't think we've explored it. And I just, I think it's not costing us anything. Um, it's true that the longer it goes, there'll be more deferred maintenance and things. But, you know, you got a lot of deferred maintenance until you hit what it would cost to build. And that's, it's an asset to the town. And when I think about the funerals and the weddings and the family events that were there, I just think for twenty thousand, it just feels wrong.
I'd say if you don't bring ninety to a hundred thousand, we ought to keep it.
I, I, and, and-
Because it's not costing us nothing. And so we got to put a little money in, few things, a slate or something. The roof is great, everything's, everything's perfect in it and, I mean, a lot of, also people in this town had a lot of, lot of use of that town hall.
Well, and I think it could, I think that what we should do is try to see if we can find a way to get it to be useful again.
Right, yeah, me too.
But I, until we've exhausted those possibilities and, and I guess my other feeling is just that, I know people have looked into that before, but times change, especially when it comes to approaching. I mean, you were mentioning the other day about potentially approaching somebody about selling a house. Um, I think it was when we were talking about Parker Road, you said, would they consider selling? Um, you know, we've got people who have property around there that might be, well, we, we could pick up parking. Um, and, and parking is the primary, you know, issue.
Well, the question in my mind is, are we responsible to the voters or not? And the voters have twice voted to sell it.
And, and, and again, I'm saying, I'm saying they've voted to sell it, but I'm not sure any of them imagined that they were giving it away.
Twice.
Is it voted on?
Twice.
But, but we didn't, we didn't say at what price.
Now, give it away.
One of our old meetings, I remember, we had a lot of, once, once they said about selling it, the, especially the people on that part of town, um, they made no.
No.
I mean, they were dead set against it and Lynn and I talked the other day about it, which kind of opened my mind up a little bit. We got a, I'm going to say, hold off for now and there's a few properties that are around there that possibility of getting a parking lot and just having to walk across the street.
Right.
Because we got nothing over there.
No.
So the only other place is behind it, Smokey House, which you're going to put a driveway in.
Yep.
But there's properties-
Well, you have a twelve, you have a twelve-foot right of way on the east side of the building. So if you could get land behind it, you would have a right of way. But I don't know if you've been by the building lately and seen the signs that are up there.
The signs for parking for-
Church, parking only.
On that church side, on the west side, yeah, on the west side.
Big signs that recently appeared.
Where the church is.
Right.
And I'm, I don't understand why that happened because we haven't been using the building.
It's because of the business just beyond that.
Yes.
Oh.
Aha.
It's what?
It's because of the business just beyond the-
The horse business. They, they park all over that place.
I see.
And that's why they suck them signs up because they park right on the church side and-
Got it. If you notice, when you come up past the town hall, that business has a sign right in front of the town hall for their parking.
Yep.
It directs people to park there.
And she got a sign in her driveway, park next door. She wants a business, but she don't want them parking her driveway.
Well, I would say, I would say hold off and wait and there might be a possibility, like we discussed it. There could be some property coming up.
Yeah, it's just that, it would cost us, it would cost us a fortune to replace that, you know, building. I mean, I think, I think that Timothy was, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something for that, that building, which is essentially-
But we have a school.
Yeah.
We, we, the school doesn't-
Can we do weddings in the school?
No.
Hmm?
Can people do weddings in the school? Can people do funerals in the school or something?
We have a firehouse that's putting an addition on it.
Why did we quit doing town meeting in the four corners? That was a lot more convenient than driving down here.
I agree.
All the, all the out-of-staters wanted all down here. They didn't want nothing doing up there.
Well, I, I just-
We got too many of them in here and not enough of us.
Well, I feel it's just short of the slant.
That's what I say, that's where we ought to have our town meetings.
Center of town.
There. That's what it's for.
This is our town. Brad's been setting up for years.
I can, no, I completely agree that the center of town is a good place for many things, particularly the garage.
And if we can resolve the parking with negotiation with maybe a neighbor to get enough for a parking area, uh, I'd say it's a no win for us, or a big win for us.
Yeah.
I would love to see enough land that you could have that and the town garage.
Why don't we just put that on, um, over the next period of months or even if it takes a couple of years to see if we're going to acquire.
Well, let's put out some feelers and do that. Let's thank Brad for putting this together and getting this information. Because had this come back and they'd said that, gosh, you know, we think you can get ninety thousand dollars, well, we might be having a different discussion.
Yeah, but fifteen, twenty thousand, we'll get it.
They, they didn't guarantee anything. All they said is it's a very nice building that might attract somebody who wants a unique house or who is an artist and who needs a big space or who wants to do some kind of like dance-
Sure.
Thing or something like that.
But once you have an option and sell it, you've got to take what you get.
Exactly.
You know, that's why I say, that's not the way I'd like to see it go.
Well, the point is that because the building isn't all on land that we own and all of the other encumbrances, that makes it a difficult piece of property to sell.
And that's right.
But if we want to keep it, that's fine.
Well, for now, let's, let's look at that, yeah.
That's two of our options.
Thank you, Brad, for putting that together. It's useful information.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I really appreciate it. Um, we approve and sign town road and bridge standards. So those were the standards that you all, um, met to talk about with, uh, folks from V Trans and Charlie. Um, they're the ones that we have to sign for. Uh, let's see, there's sections that we have to sign off on the different sections and we- Uh, let's see, there's sections that we have to sign off on the different sections, and we need to at least approve the municipal road standards and the last four. Um, and we have to say yes to those. The others, uh, um, the, others are optional. Um, you all, you and you, we're gonna look into this, I think.
Charlie and I, uh, sat down and talked with Chris Tapp.
Okay, yeah.
And. Yeah, Paul was not available. And Chris was supposed to send down information, put on that first part there for the depths of new material. Now, you just had it open to it.
Yep, I was looking to see if there's any other information.
And other than that, after discussing it with him, I don't have an issue of making a motion and approving all of it.
Okay.
But we do need to fill out that front part. He was supposed to get Charlie, uh.
So.
Different measurements of how much stone or material we need to put on top of new construction, how much base material we should use, how much chloride we should use.
You show me where we need to fill it out, I'm, I would hunt and hunt and hunt, and an hour later I'll find it. If you already know, that would help.
Oh, I lied to you, it wasn't on that. On this one. It was. I was trying to prompt.
Tommy started making gravel yet?
They've been busy paving route three to Proctor and route seven to Pittsburgh.
I see they're crushing some ledge up there and they're still at the miracle.
I'm, I'm hoping SLC gets out of that limestone.
You're into the fine stuff now.
And they, I noticed they, once they got up farther to the west and up farther to the top, they're getting into some real gray stuff, so hopefully it'll have some substance to it.
So that damn does.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not here.
It's not there?
No, it's not here.
So what do you suggest? Should we, um, could, could we maybe entertain?
I'm gonna say that we go ahead and sign it.
Okay.
And then. Either me or Paul can talk to Charlie and see if Chris has sent that.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Cause that's just on the new materials that we're putting down.
Second, all in favor. So we're signing and, and are, we are circling for, yes, for all?
Yes.
Seven sections?
Okay.
Um, sorry, I'll let, so I think we had a motion.
I, so moved.
So moved, and the second was?
Me. Brad was nodding his head, but I'll take it.
I was nodding that I would be in agreement.
Um. And this is for hydrologically connected roads and non-hydrologically connected?
For everything.
For everything.
Some of them you have no choice on, you have to say yes.
So the legislative body, the municipality of Danby. Um, date of adoption, eight, eight nineteen. Um, municipality of Danby. Um. Passed and adopted by legislative body, oh my god, they make, we just repeat this quite a few times, of Danby. Um, on. August eight, two thousand nineteen, and it looks like it wants all of our signatures. So, oops. Um, tell you what, let's just pass the signature page. That might be the easiest way to do that. And while we're passing that around, the next thing on our agenda is our town office renovation update, which Brad was gonna provide for us. Maybe he doesn't mind starting while we're passing that around?
Sure. First of all, I would like to, from the bottom of my heart, commend all of the contractors who have been working here. They've worked hard. Um, they come in very early in the morning, they clean up after themselves. I don't think we could possibly have a better team than what we were fortunate enough to get. Um. We have a little difficulty with the asbestos remediation. He found that his license in Vermont had expired. And all of the other states surrounding us, you just simply type something in, put your credit card number in, and you get it renewed. But Vermont is apparently still using a paper process. I spoke with him this afternoon, and he said that he hopes to have it finalized tomorrow. And I said, if you don't, please give me the agency's number, and I will explain to them that we have a municipal project going on here, and we have our office about ninety percent handicapped at the moment, because we're waiting for that to happen. Um. Because Tyler Electric needs to get up.
Right, they can't get into that.
In the attic.
Yeah.
Um. We have also found that in between this is, if you look at these windows, you see how it goes back like eighteen inches to where the window is?
Yeah.
We popped off one of those boards.
You want to break in back behind there?
So when you, when we popped off the board, you can see the eighteen inch thick stone wall. Then there is an absolutely empty space, then there's the stud, then there's the lath, then there's the plaster. So Tom Phillips, our, um, carpentry contractor, is suggesting that we have spray foam insulation put in here. Um, even if it's only three feet up from the bottom to stop any drafts that might come up from the basement. So that's something that we need to consider. And the other news that we need to consider is the back of the roof is different than the front roof. The front roof has been extensively repaired at some point. It has new plywood on it, or within the last maybe thirty years, and the slate is in good condition. The slate on the back roof is in bad condition, and underneath it are the original split shake shingles, which have pretty much gone to powder at this point. So when he repaired the slate, the hooks that he put in aren't really into anything substantial, so if there's a bad storm, we could be losing slate. And it's both Paul Short's recommendation and Tom Phillips' recommendation that we do something with that roof, because we're spending all this money, the whole interior's gonna be beautiful, and all we need is some kind of freaky storm, and we know how we've had these windy vents and whatnot. And we're just gonna be throwing good money right down the drain.
Brett, I know, um, when you and I talked about this before, you suggested shingles, asphalt shingles. Um, are the majority of those shingles bad, or would it be?
The slates are.
I mean.
No, the slates have.
Couldn't be removed and put back on?
No.
Like, because.
They said there are less than thirty percent of the slates that are worth saving.
That's the answer, yeah, okay.
And a slate roof is rated as a hundred year roof, so it's.
It's done its time.
So on the backside, if you take a slate off, put a tin on that side.
Strap it and put tin down.
Huh?
Strap it and put tin down.
And then nobody's gonna see the backside anyway, all we care about is.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's a cheap fix.
They gave us an estimate on thirty year architectural shingles, because it's less than metal, but if you guys wanna go with, so I'm gonna pass these two estimates for you to look at. They're substantially. Different in price.
Thirty-five year shingles lasted twelve.
Yeah.
They disintegrated.
And that's because they're not making them with asbestos anymore. Did you know that? And there's a lawsuit going on about that, because that's.
Do you think I could get?
No, I know.
Going with a standing seam.
Standing seams good.
I should've, I should've done it fifteen years ago when they put that on, but I thought thirty, thirty-five years.
I figure sooner or later, we're gonna have to do the front. I personally would do them at the same time, but, but sooner or later, we're gonna have to do the front, so wouldn't we want to do something that, that we would match the front with eventually? And it would look half decent and, um. So, um, if, and, and if we're, you know, hearing from people, and Paul's not the first person, I've heard that these thirty year asbestos shingles are not lasting.
Eleven years.
Yeah.
I've had the same problem on my.
I got you by one. Mine went twelve, before they started breaking off.
Yep.
Yeah, and I know Summella just had to replace hers.
Yeah, she had the same thing.
Yeah, and, and actually, I was up on my roof recently, and I wasn't real happy with what I'm seeing.
I think if you're gonna put shingles, you better out put cheap ones on and change them every few years.
Yep.
But I would, my recommendation is to have them strip it, put new plywood on, strap it, and put, um, I don't know if we wanna go standing seam.
Well, if you're gonna put new plywood on, we wouldn't have to strap it.
Nope.
Right.
Well.
Story to the plywood.
And, uh, I don't know if we wanna put the corrugated, cause it's not actually on the sunny side, cause that's what happened.
It's on the north side.
Is, and all, all the paint came off on my barn.
Eventually that, that, well, I don't know, I've never done, I've never had a standing seam roof. I think they're very attractive. Um, I don't know how they hold up, but, and, and maybe what we wanna do is get some.
They hold up about, they're rated like twenty years longer than the corrugated.
And a few dollars more, that's it.
Well, so maybe we would like to ask to, so we have for comparison, let's get, find out what it would be for a standing seam?
It's quite a mixed end.
And then how do you all feel about, you know, right now biting the bullet while we're doing this, and doing front and back? I mean, is that?
If the fronts had all new plywood and stuff on it, and, and slate is good, I say.
I'm gonna say, because this is nowhere's, when they took the front part of the building off, uh, this isn't anywhere near what the shape used to be, because our first and second, third and fourth room is up there upstairs, cause there was a set of stairs going up. And when they changed that, it's probably when that new, or the better slate was kept on it. Cause I got pictures of the old school here.
And it's all the way to the peak, new roof. It's not like they did part when they just did that. We're sure that that's not.
The front is all good.
Entire front.
That's all we're gonna see anyway, so I, I'd say.
He only had like sixteen slates that he had to replace.
Yep, did the back this year, and.
Yep.
And.
So why don't we, um.
But let's get a, let's see what standing seam would be.
Corrugated and the standing seam with, um, like I said, on my house, it was sixteen thousand for the standing seam, and there's only fifteen hundred dollars difference going to corrugated.
Mm-hmm.
Standing seams definitely a lot longer lasting and less bother some fire leaks and stuff like that, so. If it ain't that much difference, but get a price on both and.
Right there's a guy that does the standing seam.
You heard from me yet, Doug?
No.
Last thing we said, it keeps raining, it keeps putting out. I'm waiting to get mine.
He's a, he's the cheapest guy, and he does, and he uses screws instead of nails.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, this guy was recommended, same, same guy.
Wind events we're getting now.
Everybody.
Okay, so I will, I will take that.
Don't stipulate, he's gonna do our house first before he does the back roof.
Brad, on that, on that foam insulation, um, I, I don't know anything about this, except what I've heard, you know, over the years, working on old buildings. But I'm always a little worried on old buildings, um, you know, because I've heard people say that you can create a vapor barrier, and you, so right now, we don't have any rot on those timbers downstairs, but could that be, because we have air circulating between that? And could, and, and I'm just wondering if we might want to chat with, um, you know, have, have that conversation with them, and then maybe chat with some others. I'm, I'm wondering if, um, I, I don't know. I, I'm sure you all know, maybe Dan Garceau would have some information about that, maybe, you know, I'm just thinking to chat with some other folks.
Or you can do like they do with the, with the roofs, is having part of it done, and then leave a corner, one side or to that.
Well, and that's what Mr. Phillips put in his, um, estimate here about this, um, vented drip edge.
That's where my house is, is, it's not insulated on each rafter going up. It's like every third one, so there's ventilation going up through into the attic.
And we're gonna have to do something with insulation once this thermiculate is sucked out of there, so we.
Well, we, yeah, we will, but if we don't.
Just rolling down fiberglass.
I just, I, I know that at Smokey House, at the Herrick House, we, um, you know, we tightened it up because we were trying to be energy efficient, and you could ring the ply, the, the, um. Siding, you could literally ring it, it was no way. Um, and we had soffit vents, and everybody said, oh no, if you put in all those soffit vents, it won't be a problem, but it was a problem, a major problem, so.
The house has still gotta breathe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I just, I just don't know, because where the moisture would be coming from here, I think would be that crawl space.
It's dry under there, it's really nice and dry.
The air is going.
I mean, these guys that have been working in the basement, they come out and they're just covered with dust. They had no mud or anything like that on them.
That's good, that's good. Ain't that moisture down there, it ain't dripping, running everything out.
And these windows are gonna make a super difference as far as cold air coming in, so.
Right, and we're, we're spray foaming around, um, the, the windows before they put the new moldings on. So that's tightening that up. Um, our problem is we were right down, we were actually six hundred and some dollars over what we had in our account. Now, Paul Short came in seven hundred and fifty dollars less from what we had, um, allotted for him.
So we're still a hundred and fifty dollars over.
So we're a little bit over, um, and that doesn't, you know, include spray foaming or a roof or any other things that might still pop up unexpectedly.
Well, so we're gonna get quotes on the roofing with the other material. And, um, and, and then we can, do, do we have a price on the foam?
No.
Okay, so let's get.
That, that just came up like yesterday.
Um, you know, we did have some monies that we could apply to this from, um, delinquent tax sales. We didn't, we wanted to make sure that we left enough for the buffer that we want to make sure that we have. But we also have some sales coming up that should be closing, um, we should have two closings, um, by, um, September, or by August thirtieth. Um, both closings should happen on the two tax sale properties, and that should bring in another chunk of change. So, um, um, so let's get the quotes and see if we feel that we can do it within what we have, and.
Call that guy and he'll tell you.
Take a look at where, where we are with that buffer to see what we would feel comfortable with. Is that, you want me to come down, maybe we'll scratch our heads together about that?
Excuse.
Oh, right. That would be very helpful, yeah. When will that be? Do you have a sense of that? Okay.
He's the one about David Morris's places up on.
Oh, okay.
And he had, he did the whole house with that. He knows somebody that does that.
Well, and it may be, maybe the roof is a big ticket item, and the foam's, I mean, well, I don't see how we cannot do the roof. Makes no sense.
I'm gonna bring your phone.
We believed that we had some wiggle room before, but it would be helpful to have the audit, I agree. It just gives you that, it gives you that affirmation, yeah. So in two weeks, we're going to have a preliminary report from the auditors, which will help just be sort of very sure where we are, you know, financially. Um, these are the outside auditors.
Yeah.
And, um, so if we had to wait two weeks to make these decisions, is that, is that problematic?
Um. The roof, I mean, as long as we have it done, you know, by like October.
Oh, yes, October and November.
But, you know, as, as Paul just said before, you know, you can't call these guys up and say, and expect them to come tomorrow. Um, so.
Spray insulation.
Are both these guys able to do the standing seam, or that, that's.
The two that we looked at?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They do, they do both. But like it.
And I'll talk to this other.
But, yeah, if them guys do it, ask them if they use screws or nails.
Okay.
Staples, so if they staple it or nail it, it'll come loose. That's what that baby says, says, you gotta screw it.
And any metal roofing now, you have to screw it because of the wind.
It's those clips that holds up, see?
Oh.
And he puts them every two foot apart, clips all the way up. See, a lot of guys go four foot and nail it. That's why sometimes you see them roofs go off one piece, because it's all nailed or stapled.
So typically, we wouldn't have another meeting though, until next month.
Yes.
We're probably. We do have, um, we do have that Board of Civil Authority meeting.
We do, on the twenty second.
So maybe we could piggyback a little, ten minute special meeting.
Yeah, maybe we can do that, and we'll have the information by then, and maybe we'll have the auditors report by then.
Sign that.
Otherwise you can't go home.
All right, so the other thing that's on my mind, um, is just that we've got the, um.
Have that on the calendar.
Here you go, chief.
We've got the River Quarter meeting coming up, and I'm, we haven't done a written notice about that yet, because we've been trying to find out what we can do and.
What's the time on that one, Brad?
So.
Board of Civil Authorities.
Uh, that is a good question. I have on my calendar.
Oh, I think it was.
It's early, isn't it? Like six or six thirty or something?
In my computer, hold on a second, I can look it up.
No, that's fine, just, just text it to. No, that's fine, just, just text it to me.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure I'm here, or, I don't, it's not my calendar, so
Here, I've got it right here.
I'll put nine AM. That way, at least I'll know. Just in case. If it's not my calendar, I
Yeah, we have to act on the tax appeal and finish purging the checklist.
Right. We have some work to do.
Is the River Corridor, right?
That's the River Corridor meeting, um, the
BCA, I think, is early on a Wednesday.
I think it's the twenty-second, um, uh, no, I don't have it on the twenty-second.
No, I think it might be on the twenty-first, or
No, it's, it's the fourteenth, five-thirty.
It's the fourteenth.
Next week is the fourteenth.
Okay.
Yep, at five-thirty.
Okay.
So we may not have the auditor's report by then, but we'll, let's see.
Well, I'll definitely be able to have these estimates by then.
Okay, all right.
I don't have either one of them, so Okay.
All right, any other bit, well, any public comment? It's not much public. Um, any other business to come before the board? I don't hear any, I'd love to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Make a motion.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.